Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting of the Board of Supervisors. I would ask that everyone join, stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening. Going to open up with our first interview, Mr. Michael Brennan. Michael, would you mind giving your little synopsis for the viewing audience about two minutes? Highlights of who you are and why you're interested in running?
Sure.
Or is he sitting?
My name is Michael Brennan. I'm a forty-three-year resident of Lower Makefield Township. I've moved away a couple of times for jobs, for law school. But other communities I've lived in, they were pretty nice, never really felt like home to me. And I've always come back here. I'm applying for this position specifically because I think I have a skill set that will be beneficial to the board and to the township. My hope is that, I know it's a short term, but that I won't just be keeping the seat warm for somebody else, that I will be contributing to plans for the future of the township. And hopefully whoever takes over for this seat in January when I leave, I'll leave it in a position where that person, the board and the township is in the best position possible to execute those plans going forward.
Great, thank you. With that, I'm going to open it up to the board. So John, are you, you mind if you lead off?
Sure. Good evening and thanks for coming out tonight. First question for you. What do you think of the two or three most important decisions the board has made over the last five years? And could you tell me if you agree or disagree with them? And if so, why or why not?
Sure. One of the decisions that I think was very important and I have reservations about was the sale of the water system to Aqua Pennsylvania. I don't necessarily disagree that the system needed to be sold, given the position that the township was in and given the circumstances. But having looked into the parent company of Aqua Pennsylvania, knowing that they've issued a dividend to their shareholders every quarter since the early eighties, gives me pause. I don't necessarily know that that would have been the best decision. It may have been the only decision that could have been made by the board at that time. I paid attention to the meetings, I listened, but I didn't have all the information that you all had. So I don't know if that was the best decision that could have been made at the time. Other than that, you know, I've paid attention to issues in regard to Sandy Run, which has happened over the past few years and dealing with that. I think ultimately the right decision was reached with that, with the changes that were made. Think that a lot of people have not yet quite learned how to use a traffic circle. But I think that ultimately it was the right decision and probably the safest decision that could have been made.
Don't want to take too much time.
Dan, you want to go?
Michael, how you doing? Thanks for coming out. Let's see, so I go this way. Since you will be here, you mentioned, you know, you don't want to keep the seat warm. I think that's a good way to say it. Can you discuss sort of your background or your experience specific to township-related issues? Not necessarily what it could be, you know, experience of boards and committees. It could be, you know, coming to board meetings and input into board decisions. But what is your experience with board topics and how we could execute those so they can hit the ground running?
Right. So my experience with most of that is more from the litigation perspective, dealing with township ordinances. I worked for the City Solicitor's Office in Philadelphia for a term when I was in law school. And I handled cases from initiation to the end. It was only for one semester, but I was responsible for those cases and I had to deal with different ordinances related to sidewalk rules, which are a little bit different for the state of Philadelphia than township. And deal with the tort claims requirements, deal with immunities, which are mostly similar to what township here deals with. That's been most of what I've dealt with. I've also dealt with, from the litigation perspective, handling cases against municipalities. Actually, Mr. Fedorcheck, after he retired from Lower Makefield Township, took a temporary position in Cheltenham Township and was a witness in one of the cases I had to handle. That case is still active actually, and it deals with traffic issues at a crosswalk. It deals with multiple municipal entities. It's the township, it's SEPTA, it's the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. There's an interplay because of the intersection where the accident happened. I have had to deal with depositions of individuals who develop plans for construction for modification of the SEPTA station that's in that area. That's been, you know, most of my experience has been from that perspective.
Okay. Then I guess, related to that, with, when it comes to being on the board, I'll go a different way in terms of your approach to communicating with the public, whether you have online profile or just how you're communicating with the public. You know, we have a lot of folks, when they come in front of the board, they come up with an issue. So they're not always here in happy moods, which I understand because they want the board to address something and the township to address something. So can you discuss how you, one, if you had, how you would look to communicate with the board and the public over the next few?
Sure. So that type of communication is something I deal with every day with my clients. My client comes to see me because they've had a bad day. They come to see me, they're angry, they're frustrated, they're scared. They don't know what they need to do next. And my first meeting with my clients is in large part always trying to address those concerns. Explain to them what their rights are, explain to them what they can expect, explain what they can expect from me and make sure they know that I'm available to communicate with outside of when we leave this meeting. And I make sure I'm always available for those reasons. Those same feelings are the feelings that I see when I attend the meetings in front of the Board of Supervisors. And I would hope to treat residents the same way I treat my clients in those cases.
I don't want to. Oh, thank you. No worries. Thank you so much for putting your name in the hat. One of the things that the board in the final quarter of this year is going to be looking at is budget. So, you know, we do the proposed budget for the 2024 year. Keeping that in mind, and I'll give you a hypothetical situation. The township is facing kind of some dire financial decisions that they have to make as far as being able to maintain services at a high level. We're up against how high we can raise real estate taxes because of, you know, our millage almost being maxed out. What recommendations would you have from a financial standpoint to ensure that the township can keep going?
I'd have to have a better understanding of what the specific concerns are. But I tried to highlight this with my letter of interest. There's a joke that people become attorneys because they're not good at math. But if you're not good at math, you're not going to be a very good attorney because every aspect of my job involves budgeting. I handle all kinds of cases from complex defense cases where I have to prepare a budget. And I have to send that proposal to an insurance company for them to approve to minor defense cases where the insurance company gives me a budget and tells me, this is how much you have to spend on this case. And if I want to deviate from that, I need permission. To plaintiff's cases, which are typically handled on contingency, which means I'm not getting paid on that case unless I succeed. And I have to consider those cases in the context of the whole firm. I can't take a case that I would love to take if the costs are going to be too high and we can't maintain the other cases that we have. And that's a decision we make as a firm together. We always, everyone has, in my line, they have the brunt of the mill cases that everyone deals with. But you also have, we try to have more complicated cases that we want to play around with and we can't always take those cases. So that's the consideration that I would be able to bring to the table without having an understanding of specific numbers. It's hard for me to answer a recommendation I would have for the township. And obviously I wouldn't want to cut any services.
Thank you.
Michael, I'm going to be asking the same question to everybody. It's part of the requirement in order to be a successful candidate to fill the seat. So can you confirm that you've been registered to vote in the township of Lower Makefield for at least the last year?
Yes.
Okay. And then I appreciate what you were saying about the budget and needing to understand more. So the successful candidate will learn a lot about the budget because that's really the big lift over the next months. And to the extent that is James outlined, part of, you know, where we sit right now is how do we, how to split those dollars up, right? You know, you have one dollar, how are you going to allocate it to what services? When you think about your time in the township, is there something that you think we aren't dedicating enough money to? Or should be dedicating more money to, or should be dedicating less money to?
Sure. I live in Maplevale and the big issue that's been there recently is stormwater management. I think overall, that's something that the township has needed to address for a long period of time. The storm that came through on July fifteenth, if it was a few miles south, it would have been residents of Westover in here every week at supervisors' meeting, asking what you're doing, what's coming next. I think that what I've heard has been pretty good as far as mitigation for what happened, prevent it from being as severe in the future. But I think overall, the plan needs to be addressed for older communities. And I think that can be, excuse me. I think that can be done with development that's also been discussed by the township going forward. There's opportunities to use that development to incorporate stormwater management and maybe get the best of both worlds with some of those things.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have anything else they would like to ask? And I'll give you two minutes. Did you say yes? Now I'll give you the last two minutes to either tell us something about yourself we didn't get to or sum up whatever you'd like to discuss.
Okay. So I talked about communication and budgeting. And one of the other aspects of being an attorney that I think is directly relevant to working on the Board of Supervisors is I need to be able to synthesize new issues, new information very quickly. I talked briefly about handling complex cases. Despite what my undergraduate degree was and despite what my prior experience was, I am not an engineer currently. And I have to communicate, work with engineers, and I have to deal with unique issues on a day-to-day basis. Being able to take in new information, apply that information and communicate so that I understand that information is something that's necessary for my job and would pretty clearly to me be necessary for anybody sitting on the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. I appreciate it. Thanks again.
Good evening, Marion. Hi. We'll try to stick to more or less the same format. So if you could use about two minutes to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being a Board Supervisor.
Our family was transferred here over forty-four years ago. And we, our children went to school here. So we feel that we are.
Can you move closer to the mic, please? Thank you, Marion. You can even pull it towards you, it's not.
Oh, there you go. How's that? So we feel that we have been members of the community. And most of the time, I usually watch the Board of Supervisors meetings when they're on, when they're being televised. And I enjoy that in a sense because I get a chance to see what is going on. One of the reasons I, my background is in mathematics and safety. As you see from my letter, I was the Commissioner of Public Safety for the city of Golden Valley, Minnesota. And we were able to get a couple of interesting laws passed in the state of Minnesota when they were having school bus issues where they couldn't take children across dangerous intersections. And because of that, they passed the emergency school bus law, which enabled children to board a bus that was just waiting for a younger group to come out. And they would then bus the children across the dangerous intersections. Not take them to their homes, but just bus them across the intersections. I have done many things in the forty years that we have been here. And I think most of you know that I write various things and I have several books to my credit. In addition to which, I take many courses beyond my degree. And my degree is in mathematics. And I am now working with MIT on their Computer Science Artificial Intelligence Lab, or known as CSAL, and also with Duke and with Carnegie Mellon. And these are different programs that I use when I teach children, sort of as an ad hoc thing, where I teach them computer programming. And I work with girls who code and with other things. So these are a lot of volunteer jobs, but it's fun and I like it. The, I used to teach, but this is my retirement, is to have fun. Why do I want to be on the board? I want to make a difference. And I think that I have the experience over the years to be able to give some input, whether it is roads, budget, or any other activity that would be coming up in the next few months. I do not want to run for a term. I feel that whoever runs for a term should be elected by the people. This is an opportunity for me to help you out, which is what I want to do, and without making a long-term commitment. I guess that's the, that's the thing.
Thank you. Dan, you want to lead off this time?
Thank you. Thank you for coming out this evening. It's good to see you.
And I'm glad I'm here early because I'm a Vikings fan.
Wrong answer.
That's funny. How do I top that one? I'm not going to say what I'm a fan.
You can say whatever you want.
Nothing against the Vikings. So I'm gonna, I'll just, I want to try and be consistent with my questions, but I can probably already answer some of it for you. But it's good to hear your response. Because, you know, this is a very short term with some very important issues coming up over just the next few months. It's good to be able to hit the ground running, right? Having someone that can step in and really knows the issues. So my first question is, and has a couple of parts, but it's pretty simple, pretty basic, I think. What experience do you have with township government? It may be attending meetings, being parts of boards and committees, specific skill sets that you would bring and how you would apply those to the next few months in this term to really, like I say, hit the ground running?
Well, I believe I have an analytical mind and I can sort things and make my decisions on what is presented to me. The next couple of months are going to be very important when it comes to budget and having the mathematical background. I can certainly participate in that once I am fully aware of the various issues or specifics that are facing the board.
How many, you've been on boards and committees before, advisory boards and committees?
Well, at the present time, I'm on the emergency management. But Chief Kalusi has his staff running most of it. But there were many nights that we sat in the police station when there were difficulties getting people to move and making the decisions that we had to.
Same question I, same second question I asked previously. What, like I said, when people come to board meetings or reach out to board members of the township, sometimes it's it's because there's a big issue that is of concern to them. So it's not always, they're not coming in with a smile on their face, ready to give us a high five about something. So what is your approach to communicating with the public in meetings, possibly online, follow-up, et cetera? How do you approach that issue?
I think that there has been much more communication in the last year or so. And I think that, I think that the newsletter that is put out quarterly and maybe more often is a source of information for the people who live here. I am a member of the seniors who meet over at the community center. And we are going to have our elections come November, I guess. And there are many changes that are going to be made within the organization. The important things. The, uh, important things here is that I, that I hope to be able to bring a new look for the next couple of months to the board or to the information that's being given out. But the most important thing is that we have the video that is going to be coming, that comes out every two weeks. And also the, um, newsletter, which is a beautiful piece of work.
Thank you.
James?
Sure. Thank you. Uh, nice to see you again. So, uh, as, as you mentioned, you know, that the budget is one of the things that the, uh, board of supervisors looks at in the fourth quarter of every year. Um, I'm going to frame the question a little bit differently than I did to Mr. Brennan. Um, so hypothetically, we're in a environment where we need to make some drastic moves. Your options are cutting services or an EIT or blended, uh, some type of blended approach with both of those things, which would also include lowering real estate taxes. Which would, would you be in favor of?
Well, I would certainly be in favor of lowering real estate taxes. But I think that the, um, it has to be a balance. You can't just knock out one area and say, we're going to put all of our, all of our eggs in one basket. Because all baskets have to be filled. And which ones are going to take priority is going to depend upon what each basket is going to be representing. I do not know that at this point. And I think you can appreciate that.
True. Thank you.
John?
Ann Tarkington, great quarterback or greatest quarterback?
Ah. Well, where we lived in Minnesota, there were, most of the players lived in the same town that we did. So we would see them in the grocery stores and places like that. He was good. He really was.
So my second question, which is, um, over the last five years, uh, what do you think of the decisions, two or three decisions the board has made that you think are most consequential? Which one of those do you agree or disagree with? And if so, why or why not do you agree or disagree with the decisions the board made?
Well, when I'm looking at the building that's going on for the new supermarket, uh, the Wegmans complex, I, I just have a feeling as I look at the density and the services that are going to be offered, maybe there should have been some other, well, there should have been an alternative before they went ahead. I was not really pleased with the way it was pushed through. Uh, a lot of people were not. But as far as, uh, the traffic circles, they are, they're helpful. But people still aren't used to them, even though it's been over a year, I believe, that they've been in, in effect. And the, um, other thing is that many times the crossing of, of the tracks, that has to be upgraded and it's not up to us to do it. It's up to the people who run the trains. And I would hesitate to say, well, it's not our responsibility, but someone should reach out to them and say, hey, listen, fix the roadway so we can get across it without possibly puncturing our tires. The, uh, number of ball fields, that's problem, problematical. We do have a lot more youngsters in the township and we have a lot more youngsters going out for sports. So I do approve of that. But the maintenance of them is a big, a big, um, chunk of the budget. When I see them out mowing, seeding and doing all this for the, um, for the fields, then I wonder what, how, how are we going to pay for that? I do not know where the money comes from unless the teams are paying township to use the fields. So that's where I'm coming from.
Thanks.
So again, you know, we're all, we're all trying to stay somewhat consistent, but can you please confirm that you've been a registered voter in Lower Makefield for at least a year?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned in your opening, uh, comments that one of the things that you might weigh in and weigh in on was roads. So could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, there are some things that I don't know if this board has had a chance to really ride around and look in. When I run down Big Oak Road towards Oxford Valley Road, those curves are so dangerous, especially at night. When people are riding over the, they're riding in the, I guess the, the slow lane or the far right lane. And people coming east don't have a chance to, um, stay in their lane because of the curves. And now thirty-five, forty years ago, that road was realigned. I never saw how it helped. It used to be a, a straight road and now it has all these curves around Big Oak Woods. Now, part of Big Oak Woods has a fence in the woods. You can see it in, especially in the wintertime. It, it looks like, um, a square of four, four squares. And it's, I guess, designed to keep the wildlife in there as opposed to running across the road. And we see them every night if we're out after dark. We do see the animals at different parts. Uh, maybe to extend that fence all around the parts that are facing Big Oak. Now, I know even driving up Skylar in the dark, it is very dangerous because you have to make sure that you're looking, not only straight ahead as to where you're going, but you're looking left and right. You see the, uh, lovable creatures trying to cross the road, but they're learning. They know to stop and look. And they don't dart out in front of us. So we have very smart animals.
Maybe they're coding.
They could be.
So with that, uh, you have about two minutes to either address something that you wish we had asked or sum up why you, you know, like to serve.
I would like to serve for the short period of time, as I said, to make a difference. And to learn more about what is actually going on here in, in town. And to be part of the community to do this. I've done a lot of things in the past and I think I'm ready to do this for the next couple of, couple of months.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any chance we have anybody on Zoom? Nope, I'm sorry. Nope, my mistake. He was sitting outside, so he's here. Thank you.
Evening.
Hey, um, you can take about two minutes, explain your interest in being a board member. Um, say your full name, please, because, uh, I think you're new to some of us. And, uh, then we're going to pepper you with questions. So the mic is movable. So if you're not loud enough, the gentleman in the back is going to start waving madly at me. So please do all you can to project.
I'm sure that, uh, if there's any issues with hearing me, um, please let me know. But, uh, my name is Michael Hustla. I'm at, uh, 1573 Clark Drive in Yardley. Been there about four years now. And, um, my interest is in this position and being, become part of the board is to can give back to Lower Makefield Township. Over the past thirty years, I've been investing my time in myself, my family, um, with interests of participating in community invol, events, you know, at this level. Um, but, you know, the things have, you have a balance. And I think at this point I have balance in my life where I've been able to contribute back to the uh, community, one through, um, being a volunteer with the Yardley Makefield Fire Company, as well as becoming a part of the Mace, uh, be, becoming a Mason earlier, um, earlier this year. So I'm starting to evolve in my interests. And when this position became available, it really struck a chord in wanting to become part of a bigger organization. I think, um, you know, looking back at what Mr. Weiss had done over his term aligns with my background in real estate finance. Organizations that I currently work for is such as a Mount Cuba Center, which is a botanical garden. With its mission to, to preserve and conserve land. Um, and I think Lower Makefield Township finds itself in a period of growth as well as the need to balance that growth with protecting our natural resources and allowing folks to enjoy them.
Great. Thank you. James?
Sure. Michael, thanks for coming out. Um, so fourth quarter of 2023, we look at doing the budget for 2024, obviously. Hypothetically, and this isn't the actual case, but hypothetically, the township is in kind of a dire financial situation and needs to come up with a solution for it. Um, options being, uh, an EIT, cutting services. And then as far as an EIT, if there's one enacted, lowering real estate taxes or, or a blend of those three things, would you be in favor of any of those?
It would be, I have to evaluate the terms of EIT, you know, the terms and conditions of those, what's the long-term effect? Um, also looking at what services were providing and the benefit to the community at large. And then also, um, just overall, taking a, a broad approach to it to see where there's efficiencies and where there's possibilities of taking funds and reallocating them temporarily so that we can fund other, um, other needs. And then balancing it. It's not, I don't think it would be a one-for-the-other-type decision. It would be a decision to balance them equally and, and take advantage of the benefits of all three.
Excellent. Thank you.
Evening. Thanks so much for coming out. Uh, it's a pleasure to meet you. Um, question for you, you, you followed what the township's been doing over the last couple of years. Can you give me an idea of the top two or three things that have been most impactful that township has done? And whether you agree with them or disagree with them, and if so, why or why not?
So what I've observed over, uh, my short term in, um, Lower Makefield Township is its interest in investing back into open space. Uh, there's been a lot of improvements done for the, the community for not only walking paths, but other areas of exercise and enjoyment. Um, you know, basically right across the street, um, I've seen a, a, a improvement in sports areas to allow the, uh, the youth to participate in, um, events or sports that bring them together. And I think that's an important part of, you know, nurturing that, um, that age group because they find themselves despondent and finding a neat things to do. I think it's a great thing to do to bring them together in sports. That's one way. The investments that I've seen in the walking paths for families for exercise and, and it actually, you know, not only physical exercise, but mental exercise to allow them just to unwind. A lot of us, um, you know, do many different roles between family, business and personal. So that, that has been a great benefit. Then there's other services, um, that have been opened up to the community that I think they, it's very advantageous to them. Now, in terms of open space and growth, um, you know, just recently with the, uh, Cricket Reserve that's opening up. You know, there is a concern about traffic flow, especially during the holidays, uh, right now with, you know, the events that go on at Shady Brook, it does get very congested in that area. Um, but I think with proper management, we can, uh, you know, remediate that. I think that we've done a great job over the years of doing that. So we'd have to manage, um, surge. Um, but I believe, um, you know, the other part of it is just actually conserving the land. You know, what spaces do we need to keep in their current condition so that we have sustainability moving forward? And that equal balance. Excellent. Thanks.
Thank you again for coming in. So, uh, my question is, again, since this is a short, relatively short term, you, you really have to hit the ground running. You know, as, as James mentioned, you know, this, this is really budget season just starting off, so that's going to be a big part of it. But, um, I would ask you to just briefly explain what experience you've had with, with township government, whether it's Lower Makefield or others. Have you attended or watched meetings? Uh, are, are you presently part of any advisory boards and committees or other groups in the township? And then based off of that experience with these boards and committees or attending meetings and just generally your experience with municipal government, what skill sets you bring to the table? That can enhance, can enhance this board and really, uh, allow you to hit the ground running over the next few months.
So I've been independent of any township committees. I have, like I said, this is my first, um, step into, um, becoming part of the community and part of a board. Um, but if I look back at my career in finance, I've been, um, leading budget, um, development at the corporate level for Pfizer as well as S and P Global, um, two large organizations. I am actually, um, now doing the budgets for a nonprofit Mount Cuba Center, which I currently work for um, in Hocastin, Delaware. Um, and bringing that experience from the corporate world to the nonprofit world to help align and make, gain efficiencies in the way that they're allocating their funds. So over the past thirty-plus years, um, in developing budgets, implementing budgets and then monitoring budgets, I feel that, um, that experience will lend itself greatly to the township level. It may, it'd be a little bit, there's going to be a learning curve. I'm going to have to understand, you know, there's gives and takes, just like in a nonprofit world. Um, but you know, generally in budgets, the largest busts are drivers or your compensation across the board. They are, they continually grow, whether they are growing through contracts or just regular, um, non-contract employees. There's also expenses that are growing, um, for services. Um, fertilizers, seeding, other, um, gasoline, diesel, that they're all going up. There's, we have to anticipate those. Uh, and then, um, you have to look at our, you know, our base, you know, um, you know, our community base, the number of people that we have and are, and the number of businesses and determining whether or not the, um, the investments they are providing us are used adequately. And the investments, I mean, their taxes. That's very important to not only businesses, but the individual. We have to make sure those are using, being used in the right ways. Those ways that, again, they will let you know or let the board know in terms of votes and in, um, communications, which, what their thoughts are and listening to what they have to say. And evaluating that against the greater good is, is important. And I've learned that over the, over the years because you, you have drivers of the, um, expenses, you have to manage those and you have to, um, actually set expectations of what you can and you cannot do. And stand firm on those and, you know, have a solid backing in order to, um, ensure that the communication is solid.
Yeah. And my second question, you, you took the, the word right out of my mouth, the, the one that I, my second question typically is, how do you go about communicating with the public? What's your philosophy on that? Whether it's at a board meeting, when, uh, someone from the public comes in during public comment and has a major concern? Not always the happiest moment for them. They're typically a stressful moment for folks, so they're coming to address the board. And then how do you, how would you follow up with them outside of the meetings? Uh, whether it's, whether you have an online profile, if you communicate that way or your phone calls, et cetera. What's, what's your approach to communicating with the public?
So communicating with the public, we have to be transparent. But with that transparency, we have to leverage confidentiality. There are certain things that we as a, um, board may have to have decisions thought out within, let's say, a group setting before we then evaluate the communication path in which way we're going to communicate that. We again, have to be aligned in our communication. Um, and then once we start that communication path, it has to be accurate. We have to look at that communication as being what folks are going to be asking us questions on. And those questions are going to be deliberate. They are going to look for weaknesses or strengths, depending on uh, the individual that's questioning them. We have to be ready to respond. So in terms of a communication plan, it would be evaluating what, trying to trying to anticipate what those questions are going to be because I think we all know what they are going to ask and be ready for that, but have a clear explanation and it's to the point, direct, and it's, and it's honest. That's the most important thing, transparency and honesty. But it has to be balanced with the, what you can communicate and what you aren't able to communicate in terms of activities that the township is involved in or discussing.
Thank you. I want to first start by saying thank you for being a member of our volunteer fire department. As you know firsthand, it's something that we need more and more volunteers for. And I appreciate that you're relatively new to the township and one of the things, first things you did was get involved. So, thank you for that. Can you please confirm that you've been registered to vote in the township for at least a year?
Yes, I've been registered.
Excellent. So, with that, I want to give you a chance to address anything that we haven't asked you that you'd like to bring out about your skill set and kind of, you know, sum up your presentation because time flies and fifteen minutes is over quickly.
Yes. So, again, I'd like to thank you for considering me for this position. Because when I saw it, I've seen in other areas where there's low participation. And when the article came out in the patch, there were eleven people interested in this position. You're like, whoa, you know, this is, that's fantastic. The, from my position, I'm independent. I, you know, I'm a registered Republican, but I believe in listening across the board. There's, there's decisiveness, there's divisiveness, I should say, in determining whether you're a public, Republican or Democrat or Independent. It causes barriers to be drawn and you go across those lines. That's one thing that, coming into this, it's, it's fresh. I don't, I feel that I'm registered as a Republican, but I don't always think like one, think more of independent. What is best for the community at large? What's the best for the individual, the community and all, and that, everybody involved in the Lower Makefield Township? That includes the people that work for the township. You know, you, we have to, you know, appreciate what they're doing. It's not an easy job. There's a lot of funding that's needed in order for things to be completed to its fullest. And when you don't have, you know, solid financial sourcing, it kind of makes it hard to provide services or to do the things that are necessary, such as, you know, roadwork. Now, a lot of the roadwork, we're going to have to partner with the state. A lot of it is our own that needs to be improved, that just through use over the years. So, my coming in is more of wanting to help kind of, you know, navigate some of the issues that you may be finding that have been difficult at being, participating on the board for your terms. And then just continuing a level of consistency until the election and what happens. The people will kind of, will chime in and provide the guidance that is needed to make the next steps in the township.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
Everything you say is on TV already.
Why, oh, but only in my head, only the top of my head.
All right, good evening and, and thank you so much for coming out, Monica. I'd like to, as we've been doing with all the candidates, give you a minute or two to kind of tell us why you're here and some of your qualifications so that we and the people who are watching can get to know you.
Sure. Why am I here? I have a hard time saying no to opportunities. I'm relatively new to the community. I've been here for three years and have quickly gotten involved in my neighborhood first and taking over various events at our local lake. And then our school, you know, joining the PTO and doing various things at the classrooms and most recently with the Historical Commission. And that's when I found this opportunity. I moved here from Brooklyn three years ago. I'm really enjoying the air quote "small town" experience that we're having as a family. I find this much more navigatable, if that's correct, navigable? Anyways, than Brooklyn, as far as being able to get involved and feeling like you actually have, can make your mark. So, I heard this opportunity and I thought, what a perfect way to learn as much as humanly possible in four months about our community and possibly serve it. I think, I definitely think public service is in my future. So, I love the opportunity of learning more specifically about LMT, how things work so that I can be more effective if and when I choose to do it more long-term, longer than four months.
Thank you. And then John, I think you're first this time.
Thank you so much for coming out. Full disclosure, we work together on the Historical Commission, so thank you so much for applying. Question for you is, you've been here three years. In that time, what are the top two or three things that you think the board has done? And do you, where do you, do you think we made the right decision, the wrong decision? If not, why not? And, and give me a sense of what you think about the decisions the township has made.
Sure. First, I will acknowledge, I'm sure I have no idea the amount of things that you've done in the last three years. And I will say, obviously Patterson Farm is a big deal to everyone. Important to me, being on the Historical Commission, going back a little further than three years, just, I realize we've lacked a focus or a plan, which is what we've been working towards this year. I do think, what was it, in 2010, when the supervisors decided to let Arts of Yardley in? I thought that was a really smart decision with what they had, what resources we had available at the time. I realized that, that wasn't, you know, was a step as opposed to a master plan, which we're working for. But I think anytime we can get a group that especially promotes the arts and can also support historic preservation and have it community-based, I think that was a really smart use of our resources at the time. And now what we're doing and really trying to get the community involved in the decision. I love with the, the firm that's handling the master plan, how they're really pushing that this, everyone needs to come together on this. It can't just be a decision based on a handful of people because it's so important. I think that's being handled really well as far as taking public comment. I know it's difficult getting public comment and making consensus. We all realize that, but I'm very pleased with, with how that's being handled. And I would say also, obviously, the, the flood is a heartbreaking topic for everyone. And I, I don't feel I'm in a position to say right or wrong, how it's been handled. And I also realize I don't know ins and outs of everything. I unfortunately wasn't able to attend yesterday's meeting, I really wanted to, to get the latest. But what I think, it's not so much the response, but it's, I think, the, some of the lack of preparation based on past floods, things that haven't been done, that had been talked about being done. And I think there was a lack of follow-through on some things, which I know is so common in government, in business, in anything, people making plans. But not being able to necessarily follow-through or know how to ensure things are followed-through, especially with leadership changing all the time, I think that's a really huge struggle for, for government. So, I would say that, I think it's really about the, we were talking in a meeting, David, about especially a lot of public works, work being reactionary in the past as opposed to proactive. And I see that effort being made, I know that's a big shift. But I think that's something that, that could be done better in the future. Does that answer your question? Good.
Thanks.
Hello, welcome back.
Thank you.
So, I've been, we were all basically asking similar questions of everyone. So, my first question is, you know, since this is a, you're going to be hitting the ground running and, you know, we have the budget coming up and everything else, you know, these last few months are important. What experience do you have with municipal government, whether it's Lower Makefield or someplace else? Have you attended meetings in the past, whether you watch them online or, or come here? Obviously, we've seen you recently. Experience with advisory boards and committees, obviously, the Historical Commission is one. And then with that experience across, across those items, what skill sets can you bring to the board immediately so that, again, we can hit the ground running and make some key decisions over these next few months?
Right. I have very little municipal experience, as I mentioned, I came from, from New York. I, I didn't get into my career in the opening statements, but I, in the last twenty years, have started and continue to run three creative agencies that are based out of New York, LA and London. So, it's been very busy, twenty years. I have always been involved as far as volunteering for events in my community. That's always been an important part of what I've done, especially with elder care and that sort of thing, which I know I, I mentioned in my letter. But I think specifically here, really attending meetings virtually, looking back at meetings. My husband specifically, about a year ago, he saw that there was no one running for majority, or I guess, what was it, Majority Inspector of Elections? He saw no one, it was about a week before the election, so we told all of our neighbors to vote for him and he won. So, he's got that job and is loving it. And we found out kind of his partner in crime is a dear friend of ours in town. The first couple that we met, they worked together on it. And so, it was kind of kismet getting them together and he's had an incredible experience. That is not my experience, obviously, it's his. But I think our family, especially now that we're kind of, we've slowed down for a second, are catching our breath. We live in the suburbs now, we have a little extra time. Our kids are getting a little older, we're able to breathe and are really eager to get involved. So, to answer your first question honestly, which I do for everything, very little technical municipal government experience, aside from volunteering now the Historical Commission as well. But what I bring is my, my years of small business experience, can-do experience. I moved to New York City with $200 and a backpack. And I now own three multimillion-dollar businesses. And I, the first one I started within seven years with no outside funding. I have a really fantastic partner and we just know how to get things done. And I think that's what I'm very good at. It can be a bit of a setback sometimes as well because I really just want to get things done. And sometimes I realize, especially in government, there's specific ways to do that. But really what I'm able to bring is honesty, experience with management, realistic experience with management. I think there's a lot of people with management experience that they are so high up that they don't actually understand necessarily what that means. And a lot of my job is client management because again, they're my businesses and I have to make sure my clients are happy so they come back. So, and it's a creative world, so there's a lot of money and a lot of creative brains, which is sometimes hard to manage. And I do a very good job getting people that are frustrated or very opinionated together on the same page and feeling really good about everything and wanting to come back and do it again. So, I'd say those are my top qualities.
Thank you. Hey, Monica. So, going into the fourth quarter, one of the biggest things that we look at is budget for the following year. And hypothetically, if we're facing a budget crisis, that would mean either having to reduce budget from a staffing standpoint or having to enact an EIT, which may also mean that we lower real estate taxes. Any of those options, how would you approach a tough budget? You know, if we're running at a, at a, at a deficit, what would be your approach to something like that?
That's a really hard one without having the inside knowledge. I don't, you know, without knowing the staff, what they do, that to me, that's, it's one of my biggest questions and things that I've been trying to figure out how to approach in this interview without saying, it's four months, I get it. I'm, I'm not going to change the world, that's fine. I want to be supportive and effective. But I love making a team run smoothly. I would love, don't freak out, David, I promise this won't actually happen in, in its entirety. But if I had my druthers, I would love to, to see who is all the staff? What is the management structure? What are their job responsibilities? What are their, do they have manuals or their processes? And how is everyone working together? From that, you can really define what jobs are effective, who's effective in those jobs? And are there any that are maybe not necessary or could be combined? That, I think, is definitely an option for saving money again. But you need to understand what those roles are and not just look at titles and say, we don't need that. Let's just make someone else do that job in the TV industry that I've been in. That's what's been happening for the last ten years. And I know now people that are doing ten jobs and that's not acceptable. And the rest of it, I think, I think it's being realistic, obviously, listening to the constituents. What do they want, what do they don't want? Even if I don't necessarily agree with that. On the Historical Commission yesterday, we were having a discussion about something that, in my heart, I thought was a fantastic idea. It's a half a million dollar idea, absolutely not. And I said that, I said, this isn't going to happen, let's move on to something more realistic. So, it is being realistic, listening to people, listening to you all, because you understand, again, yes, I'm ready to hit the ground running. I don't think it's even four months really, are we talking about three and a half? Like, there is a limited amount, any one person in this role will learn and be able to contribute in that time. So, it's a matter of keeping your ears and eyes open for things that sound problematic, asking questions in specific areas, but not pretending like I understand every single line item in that thing. I want to hear budget cut suggestions and who that affects and what that means. And then make effective decisions, you know? My family, we, we cut our, our, you know, we cut vacations, we cut food, we cut things that we don't want to when we have to at times. You know, money doesn't grow on trees and certainly as a business owner, I, I realize that.
I appreciate that, thank you so much.
That's how we have given you the hook because time's almost up. So, can you please confirm that you're registered to vote in the township and have been for at least a year?
Yes.
Okay. And so, you have like thirty seconds left of your time to kind of sum up either something we didn't get a chance to ask you that you'd like to bring out or just to sum up why you think you'd be a good candidate for this role?
Absolutely. I think I'm a good candidate for this role, depending what you're looking for. I have so many questions for you, I will back off after thirty seconds. Who are, what are you looking for? Because I've came up with a million different versions of if I were you, what I would be looking for. I bring honesty, I bring integrity and I bring levity and kindness and empathy. I make people comfortable. And I think right now, specifically from what I'm feeling within our township, there is a lot of pain and frustration. And if anything, I feel like I can ideally address that, possibly, I don't know what's legal, whatever, but on the, you know, on the side, meet with people, help, help relations get stronger because I think this is a great forum, but people just at a microphone, talking to people that are sitting taller than them is, and you guys didn't do that, that's the way it works, I get it. But it's, it does not add to the community feel. And I think right now, we really need to bring our community together. And I'm, I think I can do that. I know I can. It's just, is that your number one goal?
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Thank you.
All right. Good for now. Good luck, my friends.
Thank you.
Anybody want to talk about Sunday night? Last, last Sunday, I want to still talk about last Sunday. Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
You have about two minutes to tell us a little bit about yourself and, you know, why you're interested in this position.
I'm Alan Depew. Many of you here on the board would know that I am actually also the candidate, verify that question for this coming November. People here in attendance or on stream may not know that, but I look at this as a great opportunity. Obviously, I wish Supervisor Weiss well in his retirement, but it's an opportunity to join UFO for and work together and begin that process right now. Hopefully, obviously, then come November, the voters will affirm your decision if you, if I were to be appointed. About myself, I've been in the golf industry since as long as I can remember, worked my way up. I joke with people and say, I started as a cart boy, I'm probably going to die as a cart boy along the way. I've become a consultant, a broker, I've done bank REOs, I've worked with municipalities and working with financially distressed golf courses throughout the country. I've always had an interest in giving back to the community. And just a little bit about myself, my family's been here since the early seventeen hundreds. In fact, if you cross into Shawnee, you'll see a sign that says Nicholas Depew, first known settler into the northeast Pennsylvania, and there's still a Fort Depew there in attendance. So, I have a love for this country. I have a love for this community. You might even say it's a great place to live. But I've reached out. I've reached out previously for volunteer opportunities. Uh, in fact, John and I've had a conversation about that in the past. They were unresponsive, but that was before another administrator and I also look forward to working with David. More recently, I've had some concerns, which is why I chose to run, uh, this year. Questionable decisions, my point of view. Or, uh, finance fiscal management. Specifically the sale of the sewer, the rebirth of the EIT conversation, uh, budgeting in general. There's a couple of questions I would ask there. And then things of that, uh, infrastructure, including the roads. So, uh, stormwater management. I know you're dealing with that and I give objectively, I give kudos to tackling that issue. I, I watched the meeting again last night, David. And then honestly, one party rule. To be very candid, I am a Republican. I'm a registered Republican. I know the board is made up of Democrats. But I think we are doing a disservice to 50% of the community by not at least having an alternative voice. Somebody that could work with my democratic colleagues. With that, I open it up. Look forward to chatting.
Good evening, Mr. Depew. And it's, I, I just want to make sure because we're both, we both have French Canadian last names. Depew, not Depuy, right?
It's damn, I answered either.
It's, it's a thing for, for our people.
Northern New England thing.
It is, it is. I kid, I kid. Um, I think we, we probably first met back in 2019, uh, when the township passed a resolution for, for K's day, uh, which I thought was one of the more important meetings that we've had in years.
Thank you.
I, I was chair back then. I remember it being a very personally, very difficult meeting, given the situation, but a very important one. So I just want, one, wanted to say hi again.
Correct.
And, uh, please say hi to your, your, your in-laws and your, and your family.
I will pass it along. Thank you. Thank you for remembering.
No, that, that's, that's one of those meetings that gets you right there that you don't, you don't soon forget. I'm, I'm asking the same questions of her buddy. Full, full disclosure for anyone watching. Yes, I am also on the ballot this year on the democratic ticket. So we're technically competitors, but there's two seat topics.
I'm eyeballing the seats to my right, Dan.
I appreciate that. So my, my first question that I've been asking everyone, and I think you touched on a little bit, is related to because it's a short term, right? It's only a few months. And really we're going to have some major issues coming up primarily budget related, but what experience do you have specifically with municipal government, whether it's Lower Mayfield Township or other municipal governments? Also, uh, have you been, have you attended meetings? Have you, you, you mentioned, uh, reaching out about taking volunteering for a border committee? Uh, have you been on any boards committees? And then what's this, based on that experience and your, your other personal experience, what skillsets do you bring to the table to really hit the ground running on day one, given, given the short term?
So without question, as far as a skillset is when retained by as a consultant by municipalities and I can, uh, P's Economic Development Authority, South Hadley Township, uh, I'm thinking of a couple of other ones off the top of my head. I'm hired to come in there and systematically look at and break down the business. I realize this is a public entity, but it's still a business. There's revenues and expenses. And I know probably inevitable question is, how do we generate more revenues? I hear that on all the, all the, uh, meetings that I do watch. So I choose to watch them at home, uh, from the comfort of my couch, but, uh, I think as far as hitting the ground running, that's not a problem. I understand the idiosyncrasies of, of working within a public entity. The forgive me, what was this? The, the other part to your question there was?
Really, just the, your experience within the township itself, attending meetings or boards commissions? And then how do you couple of the skillsets?
Yeah. So what I was referencing was a, a number of years ago, I had reached out for the golf committee, obviously. With my background and it was unresponsive. I reached out to the, uh, real estate or the economic development as a licensed real estate, uh, salesperson in Pennsylvania and auctioneer, I should add. Unresponsive. John and I happened to run into each other at Afton during, he was meeting voters as he comes in. I asked the question and a whole dialogue of, of emails and followed up, uh, thread of, of being blindsided in public. I apologize if I blindsided you in public, but about people wanting to volunteer. I look at, I look at openings on our township. And I think that you're constantly hearing about people needing to volunteer. And I think that's a great thing. We need more people engaged in our, in our community and working within our community. Have I been on to these committees? No, because honestly, I didn't feel anybody wanted me. So I, I ad hoc committee, historical preservation, these are all things that are right in my wheelhouse. I would be happy to hopefully serve as a liaison or serve on a volunteer, as a volunteer basis.
My, my second question is, kind of gets to that a little bit. You know, when, when folks come to our meetings, some, sometimes it's, it's a tough, they're having a, a bad day. Something's going on in their neighborhood or personally for them. So they come to the board or they come to the township. Not always in the best of moods, trying to, but they're looking for a solution to a problem. What is your approach to communication? Do you have a, uh, online profile? How, how do you communicate both? What's your communication style, both in meetings, outside of meetings, online, et cetera? I'm just curious about.
It's multi-pronged without question. Uh, and let's, let's focus on the one that's most pressing right now facing the township, which is Maple Vale. I was at Maple Vale, ground zero, we'll say, shortly after it happened. I met with April. I stood alongside the, the, the pit that was in her backyard. I looked where her son's playhouse used to be and only one pillow left. I spoke with Gary and there's obviously other people that were impacted. Those were the two that was most impacted. So I think any of us, and I'm sure I, I'm aware that a number of you, I don't, I don't know who made the trip down there as well. And I think if you're in this role, you have to be out front, visual, engage with the constituents within this township. That's number one. Number two is I do have a, I personally have an online presence uh, on Twitter, uh, Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn. Each of those, I think that the township is doing a better job engaging with Facebook. I do think that we could open up if we truly want to have a forum. It's interesting. Some posts are allow comments, but other posts do not allow comments. I've noticed. I don't understand how that occurs, but that's okay. I think if you want to have, if you wanted to use the website as a portal for communication, absolutely. If you want to use the communication for, for interpersonal communication with the constituents in, in Lower Mayfield Township, then we should remove the, the comments or the, the lock on the comments.
I, my, last, last question will be quick. Related to online presence, this is, this is one actually just for you because it's something that I saw. There's an individual that, uh, comes to township meetings, goes to a lot of school board meetings. And it's been actually been in the news a lot lately, who likes to hurl accusations at people, but mostly a lot on this board. And they did post an accusation against me on, on your, uh, on your Facebook page. Where related to Maple Vale, where they tried to make statements that work was being done in my home in, rather than at Maple Vale. That is patently false.
I believe it's the same person that applied that you were at a photo shoot in Upper Mayfield.
Exactly. So I just want to make sure that, um, that individual knows that those statements are false, that they are out there in the public. I, I hope that, um, I don't know how you manage your, your page, but I wanted to correct that because that's absolutely not true. I expect probably more public comment about it in the future and we'll deal with it, but I just want to make sure that it's very clear that that statement was a hundred percent false.
I thi- I think if I recall how I responded to that and, and that certainly I can appreciate it. Nobody, nobody. But we're, we're largely all volunteers. If I'm appointed to the board, I'm going to be a volunteer. I know there's a little snipe involved, but we're largely volunteers. We're doing our best for the, for the township. I think I responded to that was it, all that really matters is Maple Vale was never a democratic issue. And Republican issue, independent issue was a human issue. It still remains a human issue. And the fact that work has started, and as I said, I give props to, to the township for making those steps forward. That's what's really important.
Thank you. Hey, Alan, how are you?
How are you?
Good. So, uh, one of the things that the board in the fourth quarter of 2023 is going to be addressing is the budget for 2024. We're going to be coming up against some really tough decisions. Uh, what is your position on, um, how we face those decisions? If, if the options are laid in front of you as far as, um, maybe reducing services within the township to include any service could be, you know, internally at the, at the township or police. An EIT, combination of those two things or, and also, uh, considering reducing property taxes as part of, uh, the big budget picture.
That was a wide reaching question, but we'll try to, uh, we'll try to, EITs are are detrimental to Lower Mayfield Township, in my opinion. And here's my rationale behind it. It, the fact that we do not have one differentiates us from the townships around us. We have a large commuter population that goes into Jersey, into Princeton, those markets. We've become an attractive area. And EIT, in essence, will lower our real estate taxes, in my opinion. And that doesn't mean that the school board can't turn back around and raise, continue to raise taxes themselves. So from an EIT standpoint, adamantly opposed to it. And, and in fact, if you look at it's an extra $1,600 based on a, the, I think the national, the average in LMT is $160,000 per household. It's an extra $1,600 a, a year out of the pockets of people in this township. When nationally we're being impacted over $700 a month is one, one number I heard tossed around negatively. So I'm, I'm opposed to that, obviously. The services, I would, I would actually ask, if I may ask a question back, which would be I don't understand how a budget could get passed in the first place that had a negative 1.7 million dollar deficit. That I would, I would urge all the colleagues, if again, if appointed to look at having a balanced budget. If that means we have to look at services, for example, and I, and I'm a big Parks and Rec guy, had two, had two kids and now have a bonus son, uh, all athletes, use sports fields. I look at, I look at Parks and Recs and we were flat on revenue from 21 to 23, but 21 actual, but to 23, uh, budget. The only difference was in 24 and 22, there was a $405,000, uh, grant, I believe. But yet wages and contracted services in that same period escalated significantly. I don't want to toss a number out. I think I did some math earlier, but I, I'd want to reevaluate it. I think we need to balance budget in short term to, to, just to answer to your, your question.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Alan, thank you so much for coming out. It's good to see. And I'm sorry your experience as a volunteer, or at least an attempted volunteer, wasn't as positive as I had hoped it would be. Um, and, uh,
Appreciate you, uh, being responsive.
Yes. So I've asked the same question like many others and you've given parts of it. So I'll give you the, the, the question and then you can address it how you see fit. What are the top three decisions the board has made in the last five years and, and whether you agree or disagree with those decisions? And if so, why or why not do you agree or disagree with the decision?
We'll start from the top. Sore, sore sale and objectively, I thank you for your vote against the sore sale. I think the sore sale, as I understand it, we had a lease, uh, option available to us that could have paid us more net, net present value in the long run. So I would have voted against that. I think that's number one. We, 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 in essence, in layman's terms, we sold our house to live in our car because we, and this is where I keep going back to the question about revenue, items of revenue. We kept a golf course. I know that business a little bit. We kept a pool, revenue producing items. But we sold a huge revenue producing item in, in a sewer system. Sewer system that yes, did it need upgrades? Absolutely. Was there other vehicles, other methodologies? I think instead of selling it, I, in my humble opinion, and by the way, it's okay to disagree. One of the, one of the things I was going to say tonight is, you know, there's, there's blue, there's red, there's purple. There's a reason. I'm a very purple guy. I look at it, the broad spectrum. So that's number one. I think the community center and admittedly, I think the Republicans maybe even been in power at that time when the community center launched. I would have reevaluated it. I think there was massive cost overruns. That was, that's, that would be another one. Number three, wow. Number three, I would, I would, I would look at actually, because I had the pleasure of sitting with the ad hoc committee, uh, informally, a couple of the people from Patterson Farm. And, and I'm going to toss that up with an open, with a, it goes with open space. I think we need to be more proactive in identifying open space, identifying parcels that we should be targeting today, formulating a bond referendum, categorizing those ones that we think that we can preserve. We just lost Torbit. Raiden Academy is, is now been sold. Patterson Farm has fallen into equally Democrat and Republican has fallen into despair over 20 some years of ownership. I don't even know how many off the top of my head. Price tag I'm under, I'm hearing is $5 million. That's a massive number to absorb. So if you look at, I'd say, I'd say categorically, those are my thoughts three in my mind. Thanks.
Excellent. And thank you for coming out tonight. Unfortunately, we're already over time. So I have just one simple question. Can you just confirm that you've been registered to vote in Lower Mayfield for the last year? Excellent. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
David, thank you very much.
Thanks, Alan.
Hey, how's it going?
Hi, sorry.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, doing great tonight. Beautiful night outside.
Excellent. Thank you. First of all, thanks so much for coming out. Would you, uh, please introduce yourself to us and to the people watching at home? And about two minutes and tell us a little bit about you and why you're interested in serving.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity. Um, uh, I'm Mark Sherebko. Lower Mayfield Township for 26 years. Maple Vale resident. Uh, I'm a Pensbury school teacher. So, um, I have a lot of experience with leadership, but in an educational sense. I also have been a district social studies curriculum coordinator for 20 years. So besides just being in the classroom, I'm also dealing with other districts. I deal with parents. I deal with vision. I deal with mission, um, community outreach. And I've been very, very fortunate and blessed at Pensbury to have these experiences. The reason why I'm looking at this vacancy for the township supervisors is, um, I want to continue to serve the community. I have, uh, been in this meetings, uh, quite a few times. Not just recently, but over the years. Very passionate about this community. As a teacher, as a coach, my family. My parents went through Pensbury, I'm through Pensbury, but I'm also looking for an opportunity to not just be boxed in as a Pensbury teacher. I would like to continue with my leadership and other ways. And, um, with some recent events, a lot of people are saying, hey, I might be a good person that maybe I should come and take a look at this. So, uh, the opportunity is here. And, uh, thank you very much for considering me, uh, in this interview.
And thank you.
Yes.
James, it's your turn.
Sure. So thank you so much for coming out, Mark. Um, one of the things that this position would face in the fourth quarter would be the budget for 2024. You know, if we're in a situation where we're looking at financial crisis and there is options that are laid before you as far as, um, whether it be an EIT, um, a, um, cutting of budget, existing staff. You know, what would be a, a resolve for you and, and you know, what's your temper for having to make those tough decisions?
Yeah. Um, the nice thing about, uh, taking a look at decisions, you, you have a team. Uh, I, everything that I do and, and leadership so far has been within committees. And it's in the public eye. And when you're dealing with a budget, it's the public's budget and everything's got to be transparent and making tough decisions. You have to make decisions that are based upon what is best for the community. And you have to be accountable. And once you are in a leadership position, you need to be the person that takes that full responsibility. So, uh, in education, once again, I won't talk education the entire time, but I can say uh, there's always different difficult things. There could be rifts. There could be cuts in programs. You have a limited budget and you have to be very careful how that works. So especially in a public forum like this, and you have everybody watching, you do need to make sure with So especially in a public forum like this, and you have everybody watching, you do need to make sure with that decision, when I say yay or nay to something, I'm going on record. And I want to have enough research and being able to investigate that topic as best I can and feel very confident in what I'm doing. But I also want to make sure that I pose a lot of questions, uh, as part of the team. Uh, I want to find out the ins and outs, just like within, uh, the classroom. I like to pose a lot of questions to get a little further analysis. I like the impact element of things. So you have to do a lot of listening before you do a lot of speaking. So of course, I think that dealing with a budget in difficult times, uh, I think that you really need to be careful. But at the same time, you do have to make those tough decisions because that's why you're on this board. So with that information, I'd feel very comfortable saying this would be the reason why that I would be voting this way. That it is a difficult decision, but it has to be done. And then I'd have to be able to go and say, based upon this, based upon conversations, and of course, listening to the community members expressing their opinions, you would have to do the best thing that you would feel personally with your own conscience. This is best for this township. So, thank you.
Good evening. Thanks so much for coming out. Um, both of my children are recent Pensbury graduates, so, uh, and I'm a big Pensbury fan, so I'm, I'm glad to see that you're here today. That's the same question for everybody. And then is what do you, what do you believe are the top three decisions the board has made in the last five years? And tell me whether you agree or disagree with them. And if so, why or why not?
Sure. I would say the, the one thing that, uh, I think when you look at making big decisions, I think that you should be taking consideration all, all your residents. And I thought that by bringing in a community center, uh, I thought that was a pretty good idea to break that down. And that way you can have a lot of people, a diverse group, and being able to explore that avenue. I thought that was a pretty good decision to make. The second thing I would say would be trying to balance some open space, but at the same time, trying to do some development. Um, and trying to figure out the best places that you would be able to try to provide that open space. So I've been seeing, just for example, just even next to my development, it was just a pathway to get to the canal. And it might not seem like a big thing, but when it was like that was being blocked by a resident. And then you're dealing with people from not just my neighborhood, but across the street and a lot of people trying to access a public space. That's where a decision needs to happen. And those are the type of things like, for example, open space, but at the same time, having a reason for it and also taking a look at the use of it. So that would be a second thing. The third thing would probably be, um, trying to have better communication, um, like with, uh, I want to say maybe, uh, the, the sewer type of element and outright like selling that type of element to a private entity. And I, there was a lot of people that were, uh, concerned with all of that. And to be honest, that's something that I would like to see if there was be like some more research behind that to find out that decision. Uh, but those would be the top three, I think, at this point. I can also say as a parent, uh, I love back years and years ago, but having the pool. The golf course, I know that was a difficult decision as well for the preservation, but it's being used and it has a revenue element. But there's are a lot of things that I think that are, were well thought out. And, and once again, you still have both sides to things, but I do feel like when you take a look at the overall good, I think that's something that you can feel forward, moving forward with. I hope that answered.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
And sure.
John, and thank you for what you do. My wife's also a teacher, so I see firsthand every day the, the hard work that the teachers put in. So
Yeah, thank you.
Impressed that you're doing that and coming out.
Yeah, um, I'm also from, uh, my family's from Falls Township. Um, my parents live in Falsington. And, um, Bob Harvey, uh, he, so anyway, he was over at, uh, Falls Township. He was a supervisor for many, many years. And he was also a social studies teacher, and he was also at the tech school. So I do have a little bit of a model, uh, to figure out how to balance it. And he was like the longest serving supervisor in Falls Township. Um, just to say, it can be done.
Yeah, no, I know. Very familiar. Um, like everyone else, I think I'm asking the same questions. So, and you may, you may have touched on a little bit, but if you want to expand. What experience do you have? You know, because this is a short term and we're going to hit some really important issues very quickly with the budget obviously coming up very soon.
Yes.
What experience do you have with municipal, whether it's Lower Mayfield Township or somewhere else with municipal government? Your, have you attended meetings, your, your understanding of how, how, how we work or how we have to work, I should say?
Yes.
And then have you been on, have you had any experience with, uh, advisory boards and committees, volunteerism, et cetera, in the township or other places? And based off of that experience, uh, and your personal experiences, what skillsets can you apply this position in the, in the short term?
Yeah, um, I've been very fortunate being in the leadership for twenty years. And with that leadership comes, uh, a lot of committees, a lot of time. Um, but I'm also on the Social Studies Advisory Council, um, dealing with Bucks County. So once again, it's up in Doylestown, but I'm meeting with all the leaders from other districts and, and trying to forward plan. I'm also involved with, uh, the community dealing with like nine eleven. We're dealing with involvement with students, uh, civic education, dealing with voting, um, dealing with, uh, just trying to have an element of even like Constitution Day, running Pennsylvania Day at the schools. Community outreach, dealing with service learning, which I think could be a, a big element. I know the board's been asking for more and more volunteerism. And that's something that I think that I can be able to contribute with, with networking, uh, an element of not just within, uh, the elementary school, but I feel very comfortable talking to people and going out and meeting new people. Um, I also can say that a lot of, uh, government representatives have been entering into the educational system and, and talking on special events. So I do know quite a few people, um, through that element. I've also done an outreach with the Wall of Honor and, uh, dealing with Vietnam veterans, which has been a really unique and one of the most, uh, profound experiences because it, it's very unique that for Pensbury example, uh, there's not too many schools that have a wall of honor dedicated to the Pensbury students and the community. But not only that, we have Vietnam vets that, uh, come back, but they're alumni of Pensbury. And, uh, they're well published and, uh, they come back for Veterans Day and Memorial Day and, and really having that contribution even with the JROTC. So my involvement is a lot behind the scenes, um, but organizing, planning, communicating, and making sure things are done properly and done with civic responsibility. Listening to all sides, not necessarily going after one side, not having an agenda, a hidden agenda. Everything is pretty much on public display in my field. I just want to make sure that, that leadership can carry over with this position. Being able to listen to all sides, even if it is difficult, to be able to take criticism and listen because the people that are speaking are passionate about what's happening. And I think no matter what, you do need to see both sides to things and examine both sides. And why would they be spending the time here to speak so passionately? And so maybe at times aggressively, but they are residents of this township. And I think that's extremely important to listen to both sides. So I think I could be a person that has patience. I think I could be a person that's calm. Uh, no knee jerk reaction, but making difficult decisions, asking important questions, and especially doing follow up and communicating with people because that's the most important thing. Making sure that people understand what at least I'm going to vote on and why I'm voting for it. And at the same time, to help out the team here, um, in any way I possibly can for the betterment of the community.
Everything you just said answered my second question too, so I'll pass it over.
Yeah, um, thank you so much. You know, we're trying to make sure everyone gets a chance to, um, be interviewed and to have a, say a closing statement. So before I give you that, can you just confirm you've been registered to vote in the township for at least a year?
Uh, yes, I've been registered to vote for.
I, you know, the one thing missing from your resume is exactly what kind of social studies teacher you are, because I'm very fascinated in that.
Uh, yeah, B, uh, I've talked just about everything, but, uh, advanced placement, modern European history, advanced placement, United States history. Uh, currently teaching a modern US history course, um, world history. I, I've implemented a, a big complete curriculum change for grade seven through ten, uh, that's been implemented. And I'm the person, just to kind of give you a little bit of the sense about who I am as a character. I will lead by example. So when we implemented things, I wasn't just on a committee making decisions. I was also on the front line as a teacher, teaching the new courses that were being implemented. When the flood hit Maplevale, for example, I'm not on social media, not blasting anybody. I was in the house of my neighbors, three feet of water, mud everywhere. And I'm taking care of my neighbors. That's the type of person that I hope that I would represent to the community.
Thank you. It does. Thank you. That's it. That's your fifteen minutes of fame.
Yeah. Uh, thank you very much for the time. I really appreciate it. I don't take this lightly. And, uh, thank you for my consideration for this position. Thank you for everything you guys have been doing.
Thanks, Mark.
Have a great night.
Uh, I believe it's, uh, Dave Forster.
Hello, not David Forster.
It's not my birth certificate.
Very weird name.
Does that make you James Gallagher?
Okay.
Okay. Well, we're, uh, we're going to go out of order because our next candidate is not here. So we're going to, uh, have an opportunity to speak with Mr. Gallagher and we'll see what happens to Mr. Forster. James, could you give us about a two minute introduction about your background, experience, and why you're interested in this position?
Sure. Um, good evening, members, uh, Township Manager Kratzer, uh, Township Staff, members of the public. I'm Jim Gallagher, and I'm happy to be with you here this evening to discuss my qualifications for the vacant township supervisor seat. Given the abbreviated tenure of this vacancy appointment, it's paramount that the incoming supervisor not only understand the pressing issues at hand, but have the capability, desire and will to dive in and contribute immediately. My professional trajectory as a lawyer with a career dedicated to public service at institutions like the MTA and Battery Park City Authority in New York City has uniquely prepared me for this role. Uh, for example, in my current role of BPCA, I am the legal lead on a pioneering progressive design build project that seeks to protect Lower Manhattan from coastal flooding and other extreme weather events. I have been involved with every aspect of the project such as legal support, procurement strategy, design document review, community outreach, interagency coordination, and more. After our community experienced devastating flooding in July, I thought often of ways to apply my experience closer to home. This supervisor position is an extraordinary opportunity for me to bring my knowledge and expertise to the community as a whole. Now, my interest in this vacancy isn't just, uh, professional. After a dedicated and sometimes arduous two-year search, my wife Samantha, son Colin, and I found our haven here in Lower Makefield when we moved here last year from Queens, New York. For me, our move here is a return to my Pennsylvania roots. I grew up in Bethlehem. Uh, we're deeply committed to and invested in Lower Makefield. We are regular users of our parks and playgrounds. Colin would prefer if we were more regular, I suppose. Uh, and we basically summered underneath the awning by the kiddie pool. I'm actively engaged with the pulse of our community, not only through official channels like watching the board, uh, meetings, uh, but also through Facebook groups, like the one everybody knows, Lower Makefield's a great place to live, and it is. Uh, my lengthy career in public service as well as other achievements like my Eagle Scout Award speak to my personal investment in community betterment through direct action. The impending decisions this board will undertake from stormwater management to guiding our development pathway, to the disposition of our historic assets, to budgeting to pay for all of it are vital. I view this short-term role as an opportunity to channel my professional acumen and personal commitment for the betterment of the community we all love. Thank you very much for your consideration and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
It's John.
Good evening, Mr. Gallagher. Thank you so much for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
Um, and you've been here how long?
Um, just over a year.
Okay. So this question might be a little bit difficult for you. What are the top three decisions the board has made in the last five years? Um, in your mind, and which ones do you agree or disagree with and, and why or why not?
Uh, thank you for the question. Um, the, the one that immediately comes to mind in my studying of, um, sort of the decisions that have been made recently, um, obviously Patterson Farm and its, uh, disposition, what's going to happen to it? Are, you know, of, of critical importance to people. It's a, it's a treasured, um, historic space. Um, I found it interesting that I think maybe not three years ago, but maybe more like five or six years ago, the township, uh, applied for a agricultural conservation easement. And I, I'm not surprised, but it, it is interesting that there's this master planning process happening, uh, for Patterson Farm. And one of the principles, uh, one of the key principles I, I understand to be is, um, keep it primarily agricultural. And I just think, you know, we kind of already did that five or six years ago when we applied for the conservation easement. So, you know, I, I, I think in, in some ways it's great because, you know, obviously the community supports that use. But, um, a truly comprehensive master planning process, uh, maybe would have, uh, put the brakes on that effort and, and allowed a more fulsome kind of use before, um, putting a, you know, permanent easement. So, you know, it can, you know, constricts the use in perpetuity. Uh, the sewer sale is, is one that I hear people talk about a lot. I'm personally not competent to, um, you know, opine on, you know, the, the whens and wheres and whys. But suffice it to say, since it is, you know, directly affecting me, I, I don't know what it was, uh, like before. But again, I think, you know, any disposition of public utilities, public, um, property, the sewer authority, um, are things that need to be thought over very carefully.
Thank you.
Sure. Sorry, that wasn't three, but.
Thank you again for, uh, coming out this evening. You've probably discussed this a little bit, but, um, because we have such a short time window here for, you know, for your, you know, this particular term, essentially one quarter. Budget's coming up, a lot of, a lot of issues that really have to get the, get the ground running on.
Yeah.
Day one. Um, can you discuss your, um, direct experience either in Lower Mayfield Township or with municipal government? You know, in Pennsylvania, second-class townships in Pennsylvania type of thing. And how your understanding of that, um, whether or not you've been attending meetings, whether, you know, in person or virtually or just reviewing meetings. Participating in boards and committees or any other participation, uh, with township committees, just to, it coupled with your personal skillsets. See how you would use that to hit the ground running and join this, this team up here so that we can make some tough decisions over the next few months.
Sure. Um, so with respect to direct township experience, um, I regularly watch the meetings live. I have even before, uh, I became a resident. Um, part of the reason we moved here was, you know, the thoughtful dialogue that occurs at these meetings and the seriousness with which, um, you know, everybody in the township seems to take, uh, these things. But in terms of municipal government, I mean, I've spent the majority of my career serving public entities. You know, the MTA is, is one of the most renowned and maybe infamous, uh, agencies for anybody who's visited or, or lived in New York City. And, um, you know, they're, they're, they're a quasi mini-government, I would say. Their, their, their reach and their influence, uh, of their operations, their capital program, uh, the construction they do, um, i- is massive. And, and acting as counsel for them is, is not only acting as a lawyer, um, but also sort of recognizing but also sort of recognizing the, the weight of um, of, of, uh, you know, providing the service and being a part of providing that service. And in my current role of Battery Park City Authority, uh, it's a similar situation. There are public authority in, in New York State that, again, sort of, while they're not a government per se, uh, they have a huge influence over the public spaces, uh, over programming, over many uh, functions that a township would otherwise perform. And, you know, as I, as I said at the top, I've, I've been an integral part of that um, in many facets, not only delivering projects, but also supporting our parks department um, in, in their needs. Uh, supporting um, programming needs, you know, uh, helping hire performers, reviewing performance contracts, things like that. All the little uh, pieces that fit into the big picture of um, of municipal governance.
I, I guess a follow-up question, and I think somebody knew about this too, but um, given your, your role in, in New York City government, do you need um, any special permissions or are you allowed to be?
Uh, yes. So that, that's a, thank you for the question. And um, yes, um, so I am a New York State Public Authority employee. Um, not directly working for the state, but working for a public authority, which is essentially a legislative creation of the state of New York. And um, I have uh, received word from my ethics officer that there's no objection uh, to me serving in this position as um, the uh, jurisdictional and um, you know, geographical differences make it unlikely that there would be major conflicts.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Of course.
That's good to know because uh, I am a former deputy general counsel of New York City Health and Hospitals. And while I was there, we were prohibited from any, so it's good to know that your public benefit corporation looks at it slightly different. Can you just confirm you've been registered to vote in the township for over a year?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing that you said that's just disheartening is that you moved from Queens, which is where I'm from. So, you know, let that go.
Whereabout in Queens?
Jamaica.
Oh, okay. We were in Astoria for seven years.
My people landed when they came to this country.
Oh, wow.
So um, I'll give you a few minutes just to wrap up. Is there anything that we didn't have a chance to ask you that you'd like to bring out about your qualifications? For the board to consider?
Sure.
Oh, I apologize. Apparently I just skipped right over James.
That's okay.
Shame on me.
It happens. Mr. Gallagher, thank you so much for applying. Um, as you know, fourth quarter of 2023 will be tackling the uh, tough budget for 2024. You know, if we're in some financial crisis, um, what would your position be on uh, either uh, adjusting budget through um, cuts on staff and/or an EIT?
Well, uh, first of all, I mean, I, I'd like to acknowledge that any, any budget uh, crisis is not just a mathematics problem. It's a problem for the community and, and communication would be paramount in that regard if there were any changes to services. Uh, the addition of a, an EIT, um, which I understand to be a volatile issue around here. We're on a bit of an island uh, with respect to not having one. Uh, but, you know, go with the data, analyze the data. Um, and, and, you know, for example, when it comes to cutting services, my experience at the transit authority uh, tells me that when you cut services, there can be a cascading effect. Uh, where, you know, the, the, the quality of the service depreciates further and further, uh, people don't use it. You know, and, you know, uh, for example, uh, if you cut um, hours at the pool, if you cut lifeguards, there could be a scenario where people say, oh, this isn't worth it and membership drops further and further. So you have to study those effects. And same thing with a tax. You know, again, how will that impact the tax base? How will that impact people's mobility? So it's really about an approach, a thoughtful approach um, to that issue and not being uh, ideological about it. Really just balancing um, everything that's going on.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And with that.
Take it away. Wrap it up.
So um, one thing that is on my mind um, is, is I, I mentioned my experience um, with the progressive design build project in, in New York City. Uh, and a huge part of that project is stormwater drainage. And I think I've observed uh, the board working hard to triage um, a lot of what's happened uh, in, in the Maplevale neighborhood and really just trying to keep on top of things. And, you know, I think I could really be uh, beneficial over these next few months. You're trying to coordinate with multiple state agencies, DCNR, DEP, and you're also trying to communicate with the public about it. Um, and uh, something stood out for me from a couple of meetings ago, uh, gentleman, uh, Mr. Adams, I think his name was. Uh, he stood up and, you know, he said, you know, are we talking about the DEP? Like what, what, what alphabet soup are we, are we talking about here? And that like really stood out to me. Um, we have to communicate in a way that's not only transparent, um, but also multimodal. You know, if you're out in the field looking at what's going on in the creek, show us pictures. Um, you know, uh, show us what, what, the hard work that's being done. Show um, everybody uh, in the community, um, everything that's going on. But again, like I said, um, I think I could help maybe kickstart a comprehensive approach to dealing with the stormwater uh, system because it's something that will affect us all. And um, I would, I would love to be a part of it.
Thank you so much.
You very much for having me.
Thank you for jumping in when.
Oh, no worries at all. Thank you.
James.
Yeah, so I, I was able to, uh, I was able to text Mr. Uh, Forrester. Um, uh, and he indicated that um, uh, he expresses his apologies. Uh, he, he intended to send an email earlier. He's not feeling well. And he indicated that he's passing on this round, but will be in irregular attendance at meetings to watch the process moving forward. So um, he's uh, rescinded his uh, expression of interest at, at this point.
Thank you.
Wish him well and hope that he's feeling better quickly. So that brings us up uh, to you.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm the last one still. All right.
Well, you're, you're the last.
Night this evening.
That's one to see.
Yes, yes. Um, thank you for coming out. Could you give us about a two-minute overview about your qualifications and why you're interested in uh, filling this position?
Absolutely. So good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity tonight uh, to come meet with you all. So first and foremost, I'll lay it out there. I have not been a generational resident via my family here in LMT, right? I'm originally from upstate New York, um, relocated to central New Jersey back in 2009. Living in central New Jersey, I think it was clear to me that essential New Jersey's not where I wanted to be where my family was. So me and my husband started to look at different communities and we just kept being driven here to LMT for many different reasons. And we said, you know what? LMT is where we're gonna be. I know I'm echoing, echoing a lot. Can you guys hear that?
You can, yeah.
Okay. Maybe I should step back.
Or you can push the microphone.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go. Perfect.
Yep.
Thanks.
So we moved here back in early of 2020, right before the pandemic. So um, what interests me about the role, I'll go a little bit more about my professional experience. But really what it's doing is it's taking my skills and experiences uh, and my professional capacity, my academic experience, molding that into one circle, but then adding in my, my personal life, right? What happens in this township affects my family too. It's not so myopic. So professionally, I'm a nurse by trade, uh, critically care, critical care nurse in both pediatric and adults. But I've worked in leadership since 2011, I think it is. Oh, wow. So, you know, part of my experience in that though is, I'm gonna give you a high level, right? I've gone into areas in the hospital and stabilized used units during times of transition, right? Make sure the operations continue. I've grown services, built programs up, really developed with an ROI as in a program. I think the key thing though is that I have the experience in being able to um, look at competing interests and be able to make sound decisions on what to do next. So I have to look at legal aspects, look at statutes and recommendations from organizations and what's best practice. I then have to balance physicians and what they want. These kind of represent a business, right? They have a business they have to run. And then we still have staff, our members, um, our staff, and then we have patients. All these different interests come together and I need to make sure I balance those in decisions that I make. That is a synopsis. So please feel free to ask me any other questions as, as I chime through and if you need anything else clarity on, so.
Like I had to let James go first since I.
Okay.
I overspoke him the last time, so my, my way of apologizing.
All right. Well, thank you so much for uh, for putting your name in the hat. We really appreciate it. Uh, one of the things that we're gonna be tackling in the fourth quarter of 2023 is the 2024 budget. Um, as you can tell, it's, it's something that uh, you know, takes a lot of time and effort to dissect. And, you know, there's a lot of nuances and different um, you know, aspects of it. One of the challenges that we have is, is that we're facing um, a, a deficit, an operating deficit. So uh, would you be, what's your temperament for making tough decisions as far as budget cuts? And, and or an EIT or a combination of, of one of those two things?
Yeah. So I make tough decisions nearly every day. So at the hospital, I oversee a program called value analysis. Where what I do is I look at financial implications and compare that to what the outcomes are that we achieve. And from that, we can have something that has very good outcomes but costs $5 million. So do we make that decision as an organization to move forward or not with it? I make tough decisions every day. I've told doctors every day that we're not gonna do what they wanna do. So you can imagine the kind of response I get with some of that, right? And so I think one thing you need to understand is really the sound decision-making that I can have. You know, really understand what the problem is, understand what are, so what are some creative solutions that we can look at? One of the things I do now is I renegotiate contracts. So I oversee savings for the hospital too. I'm on a large project now looking at savings from patient care services to facility to food services and trying to find opportunities for us to reduce costs. So in that though, sometimes it looks, it's, it's creative, right? Can we renegotiate our contracts? Can we look at outsourcing something we have outsourced to our internal resources? Can we shift funds from one area to another, even though the VPs don't like that? Can we do that though to make sure we're a sustainable organization for the future? And then what else can we grow? Where can we grow revenue? Where can we grow our tax base? So tough decisions is something I do every day, but I don't take lightly when we have to talk about limiting someone's job, right? That's serious. And I wanna make sure, one thing I do is I lead by data. Data is very agnostic, right? It proves a case either way. Um, making sure, like you said, we have fully vetted what these options are. Is there anything else we can think of before we have to make those tough decisions?
Excellent. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for coming out.
Yes, of course.
And was, so uh, it's been what, a couple of years since you've been with patients, right?
So I, it's so, 2020 changed that, right? So my experience, critical care, I was pulled back in, so.
That, those skills are particularly helpful for this job and I'll explain why. Uh, I'll take some of your thunder. I hope you don't mind. Uh, we deal with people often uh, who are not having a good day. And you probably have a much better skillset at that than many of us have. And it's difficult and it's one that.
Is.
Uh, I, I appreciate and have learned a lot from nurses based on direct experience and understanding the challenges of that particular profession and, and the patient base. The, and you, you've been in Lower Makefield now how many years?
February of 2020.
February of 2020.
So I know it's short.
Yeah, so it's been about three years. I, so I would say, uh, you picked the wrong time, right?
What do you mean?
Well, didn't the pandemic hit in Feb, March?
You are 100% correct. It did. So it was good for us. Moved to a larger house. It was designed better. So like my husband was working from home. He can watch the kids. I'd go into work. So like it worked out. Everything works out. So.
So, um, yeah. You've been here at least three years then. My question is, what are the top decisions, top three decisions that you've seen the township make in the last three years? Uh, whether you agree or disagree with them, tell me why. What'd you think, whether we made a right or, or wrong call on something?
So listen, I'm, I'm, I'm always very hesitant to question decisions that I wasn't part of, right? Because you never know the experience that they've had. You don't know the details that they had at time. I think the sewer was one of the largest impacts um, in past, and I've directly seen a result of that. Again, not questioning the decision-making from the, from the previous tenure. I think the upcoming vote about the cell tower. So I do have to say, my development is right. I live in Hidden Oaks. It's right there. I have neighbors on both sides. Some are for it, some are against it. I think that's a very tough decision that might be during the tenure of this role. Um, that's all I got. I only have two and I'm sorry.
Thanks. Thank you again. My question, because this is what I've been telling everyone, this is a short-term, but yet very important term. In terms of what we're gonna be dealing with over these next few months. So you've talked a lot about your skillsets and how, how you communicate with folks and the tough decisions you have to make. My question is sort of kind of related to that, but more specific to your experience with municipal government, local government, whether it's you have school board or anything like that. What your understanding is of how we have to, we have certain rules and regulations we have to follow as, as you do in your day job, obviously. What's your understanding of that? Have you been attending meetings at any of the, this, these meetings or any other public, public meetings? Uh, have you ever been part of, whether it's in Lower Makefield or any other place, um, an advisory board, commission as a volunteer? And based on that experience and your personal skillsets, um, how would you bring that to this role?
Yeah. So um, I have been listening to these meetings actually since last spring. So this is way before this evening came up, right? Because I was like, now it's time. I was ending my doctor at the time. Now it's time for me to start getting engaged in the community, right? The pandemic's slowing down. I'm freeing up some time because my project was done. Um, so I have been participating. I haven't been on any other committees in the township itself. I think when it comes to, you know, no one's gonna know every, every statute or regulation of the township. I think we have to lean on those resources for them to understand, right? We have a, we have um, a team to rely on for that. But I think knowing that I have cross-relational experience, right? Even though, you know, a hospital and a township, they're run differently, knowing how to interpret standards, knowing that, you know, recommendations are nice to have, but they're not required. Like there's certain things you know, that's gonna be able to bridge experience into, into this role. You know, going on that though, and you know, it just happened to be the timing, right? I moved in in February of 2020. Pandemic happened in 20, you know, a month or so later. And really my focus during that time was ensuring, of course, that my family was safe, but then making sure the hospital, my patients at the hospital are safe, right? So I didn't really have time to bridge into, get fully involved in the community like I had. And so I know that's a disadvantage, uh, but now I'm trying to ramp back up and kind of accommodate for, for what's been lacking over the past few years. Yep.
So um, yeah, yeah, okay. You know, I know we all think it's, oh, I'll just say it. I can only imagine what it was like to be returning to the floor during those most difficult days. So thank you for being the hero that you are and thank you for coming out tonight. Have you been registered to vote in the township for the last year? Excellent. Then with that, uh, I'll give you two minutes or so to either address something that you wish we had addressed and we didn't get a chance to, or basically sum up why you think you'd be good for this role.
I think it'll be good though for me to talk about my doctor a little bit. People see a doctor of nursing practice and they think it's just me learning to go back to do more nursing stuff. But really what it is, is it's really an analysis of evidence and the evidence comes from financials. It comes from published studies. It comes from regulations, statutes, and it comes from experiences of people and it comes from the interest of the business. So what I do is I take that information and then I make decisions and implement programs that really affect outcomes. So that's a nutshell what my doctorate is in. So not only do I have the academic experience, professional experience, I'm now trying to translate it into a, into a township experience. So um, other than that, I think, you know, I'm able to understand different perspectives, you know? So even though I have my own personal thoughts, I'm able to separate myself from that and understand where people are coming from. Um, I'm open-hearted to change. So, you know, I'm not somebody who's very stuck in what they think or ways, especially if it's something that can be shown to me. I live in data and that's just how my mind works, you know? It's not to, you know, discredit experiences because those are certainly as valid too. A lot of times you can't disprove data. Um, the other thing is that I'm a strategic thinker. I like to not only think about the short-term, but the long-term and where is that gonna bridge us into it? So, you know, I think if you look at either lens, you can become short-sighted. So you have to consider both in everything that you do.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And I must say, you got your doctorate at a very excellent university, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are you in Lum?
Yes.
Okay. Very nice. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, so for those uh, who don't know, because we had to move the evening, we have a person who had suggested, had expressed interest. Um, he is in the air right now and we are going to recess that we can interview him tomorrow night. Do we need enough? Let's just make a motion just to have it official.
So moved?
Yeah, just um, uh, for the benefit of the public. Um, so the recess, again, you're not, you're not um, can um, adjourning this meeting, you're recessing this meeting. Uh, the uh, meeting will resume at 2:30 uh, tomorrow, September the 15th at uh, at 20, 2023, again at, at 2:30 in the afternoon, so.
Are you okay with a motion or you don't think we need a motion because we?
I, I think a motion to recess is, is appropriate. I just wanted to make sure that it was announced that the time of the readjournment, so.
James made the motion. Do we have a second? Seconded by Dan. Look, oh, I don't have to say, raise your hand because she's here. She sees us. Any pub, any public comment? Any comment from the public? Any comment from the public? Yes, please come up to the, that mic and, no, no, no mic there, right there. And just state your name and whether or not you're a resident of the township.
Yes, I'm Lori Gray and I am a resident of the township. So what is the next step after, um, I actually have two questions. What's the next step? And what is the criteria that is being used to decide who the candidate is? Is there some type of document, some type of form? I mean, typically when you interview applicants, right, you have some type of, uh, of a document within a logarithm that you figure out who's the best candidate. So how is, how is, what is, how is that done?
We will interview the remaining candidate and then we will recess again. And then tomorrow afternoon, after five, we will reconvene and we will select the candidate. And part of that is driven by the statute, uh, when the resignation took place and when we have to fill it, we are up at the time because of a lot of various different reasons. So the decision will be made tomorrow.
Okay, and, and again, the, how the decision is made, is it just conversation? It's just, I liked this person. I liked that person. I think this person has the qualities or is there a form that you all fill out?
I think it's all those.
Yeah, except there's no form. But I, I think I'm so pleased. I mean, I could tell by writing, uh, reading their resumes that we had quality candidates, but I really feel fortunate. And in case you don't know, this is how I got on the board because I threw my name into the hat. So really, um, so excited to see so many candidates. So we will, we will go over, we'll watch. I will be watching the, the videos again and, you know, we'll make a decision.
Right.
Yeah, mine's based on a scoring system with tiebreaker being favorite football team, so.
I appreciate your honesty. Thank you. Is it, is it the four of you that vote or is it?
Correct. And, and in case there is a tie, there is a vacancy that then, then, uh, helps make the decision. And that's who's been sitting in the rear of the room the entire time, listening to all the interviews, so. Yes, yes.
That is our vacancy chair.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Lori. Take care.
Good night, everyone.